I'd like to call the July eleventh planning board meeting to order. First on our agendas to prove our minutes from last meeting.
Some move.
Second, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is approve the voucher for our lien.
Motion to approve, second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is to.
Who's voting members, Terry? Oh, okay.
Uh, next this, I'd like to make a motion to add. What's the name of Sandy Wood Circle subdivision to our agendas, number four.
So move, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was that everyone and I?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Then first on our agendas, the town Tops Express Plaza, special use permit. Does anyone here from Tops?
I guess I would just add that it seems they, it's unusual that we look at special use permits after they've been in place for a number of.
That was my question.
Okay, I guess. I guess it got missed somehow.
Oh.
So this is really the first time we're seeing it.
The drawings dated two thousand and two.
Is that? So Bob? Oh, okay, Pete, Pete Marston? Okay.
Well, as, as Dave pointed out, you know, the, the drawing we have here is dated.
Maybe two thousand and two, is that when they put the pumps in originally? Maybe that's when the drawings are from?
Yeah.
So.
That's the original, so.
So if they're looking to make changes.
So why don't I do Kate?
No, no. I'm not sure why we're even acting on something that we don't have current information on. Well, it's more than a thousand, I think.
Is there, is there any issue from building on what they're doing? Any issue from engineering? So it's, it's existing, we have building and engineering are good. Town, town council is good. Make, I'll make them, or someone want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Second, Mr. Greco, any further discussion? We want to just note, uh, Dave and Bob, that the, the drawings seem like they're the original drawing.
Yeah, I think would be worthwhile to add that note, uh, and to the extent that Tops is looking to improve or upgrade their facility. The town board and or, you know, the, the building department, engineering on a request, updated drawings so that, you know, if there's a change obviously in the site plan, which is if they're adding pumps, it would be a, a, a change in the site plan. It needs to come back here, I suppose, eventually. But as far as the operation of what exists there, renewing a special use permit? I'm not even sure.
No, we're not renewing, we're, it's a first timer, we're not renewing, so. Well, maybe they're just replacing pumps, pump for pump.
They're probably adding.
Any other discussion?
Uh, I would ask then, why is a public hearing being set for this?
They're probably going to be adding electric somewhere.
They're just trying to.
No, no. We're, we're talking about in the future, why they're doing this.
We don't even know, they're trying to get their.
They're adding electric everywhere else, so.
Seems like something fell through the cracks.
Someone that was in her rares. No, yes.
No.
Then it must have been in our rears.
No, it was never, never done. So they weren't out in their rears, it just seems like it must have fell through the cracks at some point, somehow.
Oh, so it was there before the special use permit was required. Okay, so before it went into effect, that gas station was there.
So this way here, if they get their. If they get their special use permit and they do want to do something else, that's already done. Right. Right, got it. Okay, so everyone understand?
Yeah, I have no problem with it.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, oh, oh. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, at Norm, were you good, were you and I?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
In hour one?
Right.
Next to your house? So just, I, I personally feel the law appropriate, and I believe that can be allowable use in North South Central Business. Have gas, unless somebody can tell me a better zoning code, and then I'm going to work on changing that.
Okay.
That allowable use in town center?
Right.
Any complaints with that?
No.
No, because there's other gas stations that already exist, and this is absurd.
It is allowed, it's allowed by the state. Right, yeah, so it's not that it's not allowed, it's just there are the option of special consideration because of what it is. And if you want to improve, that's, that's all, it's not going to be allowed. To Brad's point, you're going to see all feelings people come through with different forms of alternates coming through. I think you're going to see electric, you may see hydrogen, you may see other things. I think, I think Fox and this all in is not smart. Saying this is where we want it anyway, that's an alias.
Okay. Yep, yep, we're, okay, thank you.
And I would just say, don't, if the town board's going to consider that, not tie your hands with a gas station? You know? Absolutely, yep.
Okay, next on the agenda is, um, eight fifty-nine to eight ninety-one East River Road subdivision of four lots, is someone here for that? Come on up, please.
Hi, uh, Catchy and Ronnie Geralis from Termeal Design. The project is proposing to subdivide existing four point two acre lot, up and for East River Road and Fix Road. Um, there's currently existing rather than some property. Three lots will front fix and one lot will front East River Road.
So it, is the existing home part of this property, or is it separate?
So currently it's one large parcel of four point two acres.
Including the home?
Including the home.
Okay.
Yes.
And the home is kind of like really, I, I drove over there, really buried in the woods, am I in the right spot?
No, it's, it's.
Yeah, right on the corner. It seemed like.
It's all open grass area.
Yeah, sits by itself, it's very visible.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, guys, I'm sorry.
Do you meet all the requirements for, uh, those lots for that zone?
For sizing?
Acre, acreage, front, expect.
Yes.
Has everything been met on all the lots that, that you, that you've created?
Yes.
Are you guys sewer there? Sewer?
They are, they are, they are going to be installing sewer for the three houses that are on Fix.
Fix.
The other, the other lot will be sewered by existing.
Okay.
And water already exists throughout both of Main Roads and Service.
Okay.
That's already been into, it's been through us for review and also Health Department working on our approval right now, so it's going to be accepted.
So. What about sidewalks? What's your thought on the sidewalks?
Um, there's currently no sidewalks within the neighborhood itself. So if we put sidewalks along here.
I'll explain this process in which our code says in sort of ratio shall, there is a mechanism, you're, from this board, it can be discussed tonight. If you desire not to, you need to submit a request into the town board. This recommendation, positive or negative, will be going to the town board for its next meeting. I would suggest, yeah, you know, that, that be submitted as soon as possible, or if they are at that deadline, as a request, you know, if, if you're asking not to install it this time.
We could get that in tomorrow.
So you don't want sidewalks?
We're going to request to not install it, correct?
Not at this point, you're saying?
No, not at all.
You have to install them at some point.
Consider a waiver at this time, should there be a need determined, it shall be on the property owners to install.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll go pick.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say that sidewalks in that general area of town are kind of a patchwork in the sense that along the south side of that segment of the fixed road, uh, there are no sidewalks. To my recollection, there are no sidewalks on Colony or North Colony. Uh, there are sidewalks. There are no sidewalks to my recollection on the east side, or the west side, I should say, of East River going north. Or on the, the east side or west side of East River going north, till you get to the subdivision at the curve. Sidewalks to the west of East River along Fix Road, I think begin, maybe a few houses down the street, so in other words, it's a neighbor, a neighborhood without sidewalks.
Right.
So you would have, um, and, and I suppose if we're going to put, uh, you know, the town board requests or requires sidewalks, you'd have to run it from the west end of the western most of those three lots.
Well, the house, the house is part of it, Bob, so they could go right around both the horseshoe there, or the L shape, because the house is part of the property.
Existing, existing home is this one.
Right. I mean, there's, I, I understand that there's a lot of sidewalks on Grand Elm that are connected, but they're still, at some point, hopefully someday, they will be. I mean, there's a five houses on White Haven that have a strip of sidewalks and there's nothing on either end.
Yeah, I mean, we require it everywhere else.
Right.
I don't know why we wouldn't require it here.
This board's got us to cope.
Right.
Code is.
So this board can make that recommendation to the town board, at the same time, the applicant will likely make that request away.
Okay. Uh, anything else that anyone has any questions about?
It's your perimeter and glass, so this board would be charged for designing for recreation.
Yeah, rec fees, rec fees would be included. And it, would, would the house, existing house be considered a rec fee charge?
No, it's considered, it's existing piece, so it's the new, for each new established home.
So only for rec fees, for, okay. Any other questions from anyone? Motion from anyone?
Motion, we approve, uh, with the understanding that the, uh, rec fees will be paid commensurate with the town requirements. Uh, and that we suggest sidewalks, um, along Fix Road.
Only fix, Dave?
Well, I, no, yeah, Fix and East River.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
So we're talking about somewhere between eight and nine hundred feet of sidewalks.
Basically twenty-five lots.
Right.
If you include, if you, if, if you include the corner house.
Yes.
They would go right around.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? You're approved for Platte, but we're asking for sidewalks. Okay, but you can always go to the town board, talk to them.
Okay.
Okay, sir, thank you. Number three, the Radisson Hotel development, for, for discussion only. Um, I'm gonna, is anyone here is, was this Farbo's, uh, Bob? Was this Farbo's, the Sandy Wood? Sandy Wood Circle?
You got final block for Sandy Wood Circle.
Yeah.
Zarbo.
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 Yeah.
Okay. Okay, he's not here, though. Okay, go ahead, sir. I'm sorry, I was, this was a simple one, I was going to switch this, give you more time, you're good, go ahead, he's not here. What do you got?
Uh, this is for one hundred White Haven Road, six current, uh, Radisson Hotel. I am Michael Conroy with Elevate Architecture, not only the architect, but one of the worst stuff. Um, we have a purchase and sale agreement with the current owner, the Radisson Hotel. Our interest is to purchase the hotel and convert it into multi-family apartments. What we wanted to do today is introduce the project to you, um, talk about some large program pieces. So the current hotel, our plan is to take the current two hundred and sixty-three hotel rooms that are there and convert them into approximately a hundred and thirty-five apartments. Basically, we're going to take two hotel rooms and create a one-bedroom apartment out of it, have a handful of studios, handful of two bedrooms. We're doing a market study currently, that'll tell us how many studios we're, we're going to want to have and how many two bedrooms. Typically, we do about sixty-five to seventy-five one-bedroom apartments.
You said that would be up at a hundred and sixty-five apartments?
A hundred and thirty-five.
Hundred and thirty-five, thank you.
So basically cutting the number of units.
Yes.
Additionally, um, we actually really like the way the building is currently laid out for its use as an apartment building. Um, the current restaurant, it's on the second floor, we're looking at keeping it a restaurant and obviously it can have a very nice fine dining experience there. Currently, there's a, a sloped roof that goes out to the waterfront, we'll take that down, put a terrace up so that we can have indoor-outdoor time, have a nice experience of the water. Underneath that is the current bar, we want to keep it a bar, we, we think that'll be a nice attraction for voters along the river to come and use that. Currently, there's seven hundred memberships, local memberships to the fitness center in that building. We love that, we want to actually upgrade that experience, so what we're thinking is that we're going to take the current, uh, convention center space and turn that into a fitness center, have a real true fitness center, allow those members to also have access to the indoor and outdoor pools as well. The other, the smaller, uh, meeting rooms that are off to the, the north side of the building, uh, there's a couple of rooms there, we're not really sure what we're going to do with them yet. What we want to do is meet with the community, meet with some business owners, see what's the right fit there. So I'm not here to suggest anything right now, we've heard things like, it would be really great to have a brewery or distillery there, we've heard maybe daycare, maybe a community center that ties off with pool and spa areas. We're, we're not sure, maybe it's a, um, massage spa area, we just don't know, we want to get feedback from community and see what's the right fit there. Currently, where the fitness center is inside the door, which is on the backside here, uh, we would convert that to storage for the residents, not a, not a, like, you store facility, but larger storage for the units. We find that that's very useful for, for people when they're in a, a large apartment complex, they want bulk storage in there. We plan to keep the outdoor pool, plan to keep the indoor pool, um, all of the lobby areas and the open areas in the hotel, we're going to convert those, and there's a lot of small meeting rooms. We're going to convert those to a live-work experience for our residents, because COVID has, has changed the way people live, has changed the way they work. We have found, we've done a lot of apartment buildings, there's a, a high need for basically cowork areas inside apartment complexes, this is set up perfectly for us, and we think it's a, it's a great use for it. Some of the, some of the pieces that, um, outside of the building, we're not here to talk about or ask for any additions to this building. It works perfect for our performer, that's all we need now is to renovate the existing footprint. Maybe potentially down the road, after, you know, five years down the road, maybe we'll be back to ask for other additions on site. We're not here to talk about that, we're, we have no interest in that at this time. We do have some pieces of the property, the existing property, that we're looking at, um, transitioning to other owners. Apparently, there's a little triangle piece, and the owner that lives right across the street has actually deeded into this property, because they did improvements on their dock. But that little triangle parcel of the property goes to them at the time that the hotel sells the property, so once we take ownership of it, we lose that corner of that existing property. Historically, there was a, there was an old riverboat landing, ferry landing, that happened, um, right here. What we've thought initially is that we would take this section, it's hatched and green, and we wouldn't propose any, any improvements, any structures, anything there. When we met with the town board, uh, individually, uh, they expressed interest in having that parcel given over to the town for public access. So we're setting aside that portion of the property, which is actually right across the street from the residential homes, um, that are on the other side of the river road. Giving that to the town and having that be a public access point, potentially a public dock. And then also on this portion of the property, um, there's a there's the boat club, the existing marina that's here, they own a small parcel that's out here along the Niagara River. The gentleman that you had heard of, interested in this property for a couple of years, he came to me and said, I've got a connection that can get you in contact with the owner of the hotel, because I'd been trying to hold him for years, couldn't get it. He made that contact, he has interest in purchasing this property from the marina and doing a development there. For him to get the units that he's looking for and stay within zoning code for his density, he needs another, it's about one point seven five acres of our land to make that happen. So we're going to turn over that portion of the land to him, basically as a sales commission for connecting us with the owner. Um, so that's, that's a.
For him to do what?
What's that?
For him to do what with that?
Not my business, so I, I believe he's going to do, um, uh, town homes or so it's, it's not a part of our project, um, it would be turned over to him, and then he would have to come to you and the other town boards for approval on that portion of that. We don't want that project to kind of slow us down or tie us up.
So the hatched part on your drawing, Mike?
Yeah.
Is one point seven five acres?
It's approximately.
Okay, yeah.
He needs to get it to four total acres.
Okay.
From that parcel and what we're doing to get on there.
So what is the aggregation of the remain acreage, remaining acreage that you could ultimately?
Ten acres.
Not including the hatched area?
That's right.
So with the hatched acre, it's eleven point something?
Yeah, it's, uh, the total with the parcel that we're giving to the town, or suggesting the town's ownership of, or the, I think it's all acres is the total. Currently, these are the large existing parking lot, uh, we don't need them. What we would suggest is, we've done a traffic study, and that'll be a part of it, and I just got this today, um, that says that the, the traffic count is actually going to be significantly reduced because of our change of use, because of kind of what we have, because of getting rid of the convention center space, um, significantly reduce that, um, so what we're thinking is, well, we're going to lose a portion of it and get this property up, but we also think that this is just excessive for that parking, so potentially we'll be coming back down the road to ask if we can eliminate some of the parking stalls there and make that great space.
Well, the number would be driven by our code first would be the starting point, so evaluation of where, you know, this change of use obviously dictates a different schedule, a different review importance, so.
Correct, yeah, exactly. Um, so that's, that's the project, we, we have shown some landscape improvements, uh, we want to add some trees along this river road, we want to add some trees around the drop-off, roundabout circle. Couple of landscape improvements there, uh, when we take ownership of the property, the parking lot is in some of those areas, so that, that'll obviously happen. The bulk of our renovations will be chartered to the building to. Um, but one piece, the, uh, the building currently is six stories tall here, and it's five stories tall here. Um, a lot of what we talked about was public space for local residents to come to the restaurant, the bar, the fitness center. We want to have a private area for the residents internal of the building, so we were thinking of using this rooftop for that private space where the resident can rent it to be outside, but.
What are you going to do with the dock?
Uh, we would love to improve it, but again, we don't, so we're, I mentioned we're on a tight timeline, timeline. Since we signed that contract with the owner, we have a hundred and twenty days to receive our town approvals, um, before that contract gets negated. The owner is in tax distress and needs to have the property sold in that hundred and twenty day period. If it's not sold, if, if this process takes us too long, we'll lose the property.
Yeah, so I have a question, you say the, the owner is in tax distress, meaning, um, they're overdue on their property taxes?
I don't know the details of it, but from what we've heard, after this, this is their last chance.
Okay, so, so in other words, there, there's a lender in the picture.
Correct.
Is there a special servicer currently overseeing this property?
I don't believe so, but I.
So to Norm's question, so you're, at this point, not going to change the docks or improve the docks or?
We would love to improve the docks, we just don't want to get slowed down if there's any approval through D C.
Or. Sure.
We, we would love to improve the dock, we want to encourage.
Right.
People to come off the river and use it.
Right.
We don't intend to operate a marina, but we want to have it operated.
Sure.
You wouldn't be able, you wouldn't be able to obtain those permits until next year, anyway?
No, we, and we, we want to make sure that.
You know, dock permits, I'm talking about dock permits.
The approval that we need is, um, speaking with the town supervisor and some of the town board members, the path they have suggested we move forward with is to go a P D D. Um, and that's in part why they're suggesting, uh, of giving up land to the town, because that's part of the incentive zone. So that's, that's the path they've suggested that gives us the best shot at meeting this hundred and twenty day deadline. So we're, we're hoping to do that, we're, we're looking at having a public meeting, we're meeting with the town next week, um, to present, I believe at that meeting. I believe at that meeting, we'll start the secret talk and the, and the public process, that, that timing. We would like to have a public meeting in the hotel, invite the residents to come, give us their ideas, present the plans, see if there's any pushback or feedback we can get.
How, how far into the one hundred and twenty days are you at this point?
Um, about twenty-two.
You're not putting in any stores, per se?
We don't intend to.
Okay.
Knowing that there's a lot of current construction of, uh, apartments in that on the island and proposed, you feel that you still have, um, there's a need for this?
We do, we, we think there, that of all the apartments being built on the island, there is a product like this, this, we think this is a housing, but we think it's a step up with all the amenities, the two pools, the fitness center, the forward area, the built-in bar.
The view.
But it's just, it had, it checks all the boxes of those amenities that.
So in your, in your letter here, you mentioned some type of senior housing, how does that fit in?
Um, so that would be one of those future stuff reports, where, we're, we're also, my partner in this, we're also doing, uh, assisted living, high-end assisted living mansion franchises. What they are, they're about twenty to thirty assisted living units that are very high-end, the building, it looks like a mansion, there's a built-in shaft, and it's here, that's, that's really nice. So if some of it vacant land, we'd like to come back down the road and push that, realize the full. Typically, we need five happy.
As far as incentive zoning, is, is that all, is that you're going to give to the town, is that property?
That's our belief, yes.
No other monetary?
No other monetary?
I.
That's it?
He's discussing that with the town.
Cause you're not doing, you don't have the twenty-one acres, I guess.
That's correct.
So, in lieu of that, you're gonna do some kind of incentive to the town?
That's correct.
To be figured out later on.
Where, where did you get the twenty-one acres?
I think it's twenty-five.
It's twenty-five.
I'm sorry.
Here.
Twenty-five.
There it is.
So, a-also in your letter, you mentioned an entertainment venue. What, what is that?
So, that's the, the restaurant bar.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, we're not talking concert. I'm interested, the town was interested in some waterfront.
So, the commercial office space in your letter, that's really the co-op area? Okay, so it's really co-op? Okay.
Uh, core work.
Core work, sorry.
And we're just trying to keep it open, open and two for that, that portion of commercial space that we just don't know what to do.
So, the apartments will have a kitchen and?
Yeah, yeah, the apartments have full kitchen. Every bedroom has a bathroom. You want to be. Six hundred. Fifty square feet for a one-bedroom, nine hundred square feet.
What's your timeline on this?
I mean, so if, if we can get our approvals, we're, we'd like to be in charge of it. See a bunch of the reuse, uh, you know, repurpose of buildings and this type of thing. Are you doing anything with balconies or stuff like that for, uh, as you're creating one? An, an outside space balcony or things like that? Are you looking? Obviously, at this stage, I think you're trying to just shortest path to success story and then from there evaluating the world. Yeah, that's correct. So, the project works for us with the renovation of the existing building. So, that's, we don't wanna, we don't wanna slow down with the assisted living mansion. We don't wanna slow it down with any other additions on site. It did talk about that fifth floor rooftop space, so that would be a additional program space. It did talk about the. Terrace outside the, the high-end restaurant on the second floor. If either one of those were a hindrance to us getting approvals in, in this period, we would take it off and take it.
Uh, you, you do know that across the street from you, they were looking for a zoning change for an apartment complex and. The town voted that down as long as the residents were. There was a petition put out with thousands of signatures that they didn't want apartments in that neck of the woods.
Yeah.
You do understand that?
Fully aware of that, but we're also aware and the reason we have interest in it. Because we see the town's long-term plan for that property specifically says apartments. We're, we think we're conforming to that long-term.
What, what property are you mentioning? The one I'm talking about or this piece? Your property?
Where, where, where does it state that?
In the long-term plan of the.
The comprehensive plan that was enacted in twenty eighteen? Well, I think most of us have read that, in fact, multiple times. Where does it specifically say? No, it's all right.
There's a map and I remember the diagram.
Well, no, it, it wasn't the multifamily. It was called the hamlet portion, which, which enables among other things. You know, more density and apartments and so on and so forth. I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just trying to get to a point because the point is. You know, P D D from the get-go requires a minimum of twenty-five acres. So, you've got approximately twelve or so. If you sell off a piece to the next door neighbor, the marina owner or whomever. You're down to about ten. And I understand incentive zoning and, you know, setting aside bulk requirements and. Usage requirements and so on and so forth, but it just seems to me to be a pretty drastic reduction. In terms of the required size, in fact, about a fifty-plus, maybe sixty percent reduction. And my. Suggestion would be that a, a means of achieving. In the main, what you wanna do is to convert the hotel to apartments, you know, from two sixty-three to one thirty-five. An easier path essentially would be to simply get a use variance. In other words, that means going to the zoning board of appeals to, you know. Get a use variance to create the apartments, because everything else you wanna do. In terms of entertainment venue, in terms of, you know, hospitality, restaurant, fitness center, et cetera, et cetera. Waterfront docks potentially and so forth. Falls within the zoning as it exists. You know, including, including waterfront usage, so to speak. So.
Mark Romanowski.
Right.
We look at that as a, as a possible path and there's a couple of. Yeah, one, the use variance standard we use is fairly high. You have to show every use in the district. Not permitted to generate an economic return. And I think that's, that's a hard case to show that nothing else permitted in the business district could. A reasonable rate of return. Secondly, when we spoke with the town board, you know, they were very interested in, in really, you know, exercising some degree of control of the redevelopment of the site. And through a P D D and instead of zoning, zoning puts decision-making with the town board rather than the zoning board. So, we're sort of listening to the, to the tea leaves and following that process as well as evaluating the legal challenges of seeking use.
So, when, when you say the town board though, there, there has not been a public meeting of the town board?
No, correct. We've, we've met with the supervisor. Some individual, on an individual basis, town board members in advance of this application to get their, you know, their feeling on the book of opposing. I'd say strongly hinted at going down the P D D route.
So, so, but it's, it's the feeling or the opinion of maybe. Two people on the town board? I mean, we haven't heard anything from the town board.
Well, certainly we'll be in front of the, the full town board with the full.
Sort of full disclosure, Mark's firm does our legal work. I don't think there's any conflict, but just letting, you know. One of the other issues besides the twenty-five acres is the twenty-five percent green space, open space. It, to me, it looks like it's actually gonna be quite a bit more than that. Particularly, Mike, if you eliminate some of the parking on the, on the, will be the south end there, that parking lot. I think coming to that calculation, I think would be important for us to hear. You know, if it's thirty-five or so percent, which while parking, I think it's gonna be something like that.
Yeah.
I think that'll go a long ways and, and, you know. No.
And we wanted to stick with that because we're not sure. Real long-range plans and making it commitment to a higher level of green space and then come back and, you know, sort of sell you on something else. That's, we wanted to say we can, twenty-five percent without question and that's what governs the development site.
Were you gonna file anything to long-range planning committee for their input?
Yeah, yeah, with the full application. So, the purpose tonight was to introduce it to, to this board, because you hadn't heard anything about it until now. So, we wanted to make that preliminary application first and then the full package, we go through the entire town.
You feel that these apartments will be a step above the other apartments on the island?
Uh, we, from a order back to both amenities. So, two pools, a fitness center, co-work space, restaurant, bar, rooftop amenity, marina, waterfront. That's just the offering that isn't available.
Should they be priced accordingly?
Providing a market rate.
Can I ask why you haven't considered doing condo?
Condos are, are candidly, they're very difficult to finance. Menders in Western New York are reluctant to do it because they have a tough time justifying the value. Of the final minutes. And so, we've found that that's across the board, whether it's in the suburbs, whether it's in the city. Without question, all of my developer clients have difficulty getting financing for the property. So, what they do instead is they might start as apartments and then eventually convert them to condos. After the initial round of financing, it's, it's essentially paid for the development itself. So, that's, that's the, that's the challenge with condos in Western New York. New York City, no problem. Thanks a lot, not all that long. But here in Buffalo, they seem to be having a difficult time justifying the value.
Well, my, my comment is, I think this is a, a great idea. We've seen over the last, what, twenty, twenty-five years, a real struggle to make this property viable. At least as a hotel and at least three and maybe four different owners over the last twenty-five years. This is really in my mind not changing significantly the, the look or use. Of the property, at least from either the land side or the water side. And I think will be a, a real improvement for the, for the island. You know, we, we struggle with P D Ds sometimes and I, I see the, the, the major variance here is the size of the piece from. As Bob said, from twenty-five to ten or twelve acres, depending on what it is. From my standpoint, I don't think that's a litmus test for the, a P D D. But we do approve a P D D based on a very specific drawing, site plan, whatever. And we obviously need to see that. So, that's part of your, your time and your schedule to, to get that in, in front of us so that we can see that and, you know, reference it and approve it as the. P D D, but personally from my standpoint, I, I would be enthusiastic about this.
Appreciate that. Certainly with the full application, we'll have that.
Also, the town board has asked the long-range planning committee to look at the reduction of acreage for a P D D. Unfortunately, they tabled it last meeting, but I think their next meeting is, I think, next week or something. So, maybe that will pop up at the next meeting, get some input.
Been a discussion for a number of years. It's, it's really a question of what are you trying to fit the space versus what it needs, you know? We had a different, very, very different supplemental over the years of what P D Ds were. Says, is of itself, I know a unique one that, that maybe plays into that. Unfortunately, as I said, there's an incentive zoning option that the town board set, you know, hey. I, I think the variance might be difficult. Varyance, variance, getting that variance means you have no other practical use for the property. While the property's existed successfully or unsuccessfully as a hotel. You know, so in order to obtain that variance, I'm saying, it's actually almost impossible, or no. Versus being able to approach a path like a P D D. I know the board has kicked around different ideas of how you do this stuff and that's, that's kind of why it's on, you know, on this path.
You anticipating changing the out, exterior appearance?
Uh, not much at all.
No?
No, they did a renovation of it, you know, for a couple of years as well.
Okay.
I think it addressed a lot of concerns when we did that. Uh, we'll certainly probably be interested, drive a little bit of that experience if it will.
Yeah, thanks.
I have a question for Pete Marston. Pete. Can the town board act on its own to, you know, provide. A, a use. Variants without going to a P D D, if you will. In other words, this is B one. So. You know, technically apartments aren't allowed in B one according to the code. So, could the town board simply? Make an exception to that, given that there are incentives, potential incentives in play. Without going through the whole P D D process?
Instead of zoning gives us the opportunity.
It, I believe gives you the opportunity also to adjust the use within the zoning, right? So, you could, the, the. Well, no, accord, you know, well, as, as I read, you know, and I'm not an expert in, in the state law, but I think it's section two sixty-one. It gives the town board, legislative body, the opportunity or the right or whatever. You know, to declare a use as permissible. Okay? Provided certain incentives. So, technically, I don't know that you'd actually have to go through. A P D D process in order to do that, because the town.
If you don't mind, I, I, that's the two sixty-one incentive zone provision. And the way your code is written, it doesn't allow use changes under incentive zone. So, that's why the P D D. Vision is the mechanism for doing it. The only other option would be to actually amend and clear B one district permit apartment. And, you know, we got the sense when we, when we met with some members of the town board, that's not the direction they wanted to go. Because of its impact on the entire project, right? How would we be adjusting all this one parcel and everything, correct?
But my only concern was the sixty-five acres across the street. That that was turned down for an apartment complex and. It was shouted from the ceiling. You know, there was a lot of opposition.
And the current application for that property has a fourteen-acre B one parcel. They're trying to convert. To downzone it and they're being rejected at every, yeah, at every turn. So, how are we gonna do the same thing across the street? A B one parcel, we're gonna change that zone? I don't know how we can do that.
I mean, I think you have a great idea. I'm, my only concern is that I hope that that doesn't open the door for that. Other owner of the sixty-five acres to follow your lead.
Well, certainly, I think we have a very different situation with existing.
Yeah, I mean, it is a rental now. I, I live right around the corner, so I'm familiar with it. I mean, it really is never, I've lived there for fifteen years. It's never bothered me as a resident at all, but. It seems like it's on its own piece and it does its own thing. I, I'm just concerned about the area in general personally. Since we had the White House Point fiasco on that sixty-five acres and it was a fiasco.
It was, certainly.
So.
And it will be right back front and center, maybe.
I, I don't know.
I don't know.
I think that's something for the.
It's not really, it's not horses to horses.
Yeah.
It's a different situation.
It will also exist these facilities, these existing buildings.
Not apples to apples.
Right. Oh, I think your ideas, I would have no problem with your idea personally. What type of rents are you, just roughly?
On average, fifteen hundred.
For the one bedroom and the two bedroom?
Off from there. It's getting to two thousand dollars.
Okay. Okay. Yep, okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted, I just, why don't you come back? So, it'll be six hundred and fifty bucks. Okay.
It's all right, I want like four of them myself.
Yeah. You know, I think in the aggregate, conceptually, what, you know, what, what you're trying to accomplish over a period of time, whether it's. You know, two years or, or, or longer is, is a terrific idea. I just get back to the, you know, the whole. Call it use thing and, you know, to kind of echo what, what Brad mentioned and Dave mentioned about. What hit the fan, if you will, in twenty fifteen and, and still festers in the minds of a lot of people.
Well, that's why we wanna hold a public meeting at the hotel, get some of that feedback directly. And see if it truly is an issue on that site with that building. We could talk about what happens if, if we don't do this project. What's, what is the next step to that hotel?
I, I mean, looking at the hotel and obviously you've done this. Cause your business, the restaurant's never been able to make it there. I mean, do you really feel that you've got a chance?
We do.
Do you really think so?
A lot of times. Build their customers on regular basis.
Yeah, it's like, you know, that's a hotel. If, there's a stigma about a hotel restaurant. When it's a new restaurant that's. That's what we're really looking for.
Okay.
Chairman, I'd like a recommendation that the planning board approve this in concept.
Well, this isn't even here for them.
No, this is just.
This is a, just a recommendation that, you know, we approve the concept.
Well.
You know, for the record.
Well, I don't know that we approve, we, we like the concept, but you know, there are some pieces to it. That are still very much up in the air in terms of what might happen with, you know, the, the hatched area. There's still some pieces and questions.
Bob, I'm just drawing this out as a proposal. If somebody wants to second it, fine, they don't.
You know, I, I do like the idea of the board going on record of being in. You know, I, I do like the idea of the board going on record of being in favor of this idea. Um, so I would second that.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes everyone?
No.
I, I, I'm a no two guys, I'm sorry. So, but it's still, it's still on the record because you got five to two. I just think you have, like Bob said, I think you're, saw some favorable interest here on the board, but we'd like to see a little bit more. Yeah, a little bit more. I mean, we're not saying, hey, hey, guys, hit the road, you know, we're, we were just, again, my, my concern is across the street. I don't want this to be approved and then that kick in to be another four hundred unit and plus apartment complex. That would be my, my complaint. But, but I think you have a great idea and I'm hoping things do work out for you.
We appreciate it.
Single floor or taking advantage of like a pound with the water?
Uh, just right now, single?
Down.
There's also, I, I don't remember at all, but there's also some input on the comp plan for the waterfront areas if you were to change your use there. So consider, make sure you keep, keeps it, yeah. Okay, just want to make sure you know. Okay. Any other questions from anyone on the board? Thanks for coming in. We'll see you next month. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is Sandywood Circle subdivision. Bob, chime in. Is Matt here?
Oh, Matt's on.
No.
He was here initially, right?
Okay, I didn't ask the.
Or was it his brother?
I didn't know.
A dark haired kid.
So nothing changed?
There's like, I was gonna say, I have all representation in our absence. Yes, you know, there's literally, I, I, when I emailed you guys, there is no change of lot configurations. It's actually the same as the seventeen lots. They're looking at one in one phase only with this thing.
Sidewalks.
Lot layouts as proposed or what they were.
There's no sidewalks on it. It doesn't have.
They're gonna have sidewalks?
If, well, the, I don't, I don't, flat path, you don't put sidewalk, but in the development drawings, you know, this board could, you're, you're talking about preliminary plot. You can, you know, make those statements of what you're looking for as, as they advance the design details behind it for the engineering piece. Uh, also, before that's recreation, we could, with, or not, the final, excuse me, this is just final plan.
Well, as, as I recall, Bob, when we discussed preliminary plant, um, we were specific in terms of requiring sidewalks.
There is a, and I apologize.
Yeah.
This project. Sidewalks as they, as we discussed at that meeting during, I'm sorry.
Which I believe ended. Which I believe ended the church property.
Yeah, so you just.
I think you're right.
That was the decision that this board saw and was okay with ultimately wanting to tell.
Norm, I think you brought that up last time. Do you remember what you, I thought we just said the sidewalks were going west on, on.
Well, they, they went like west. Exactly.
Yeah.
From here. And there was a crosswalk on the cross.
Front, but not east. Yeah, not across the church.
Correct. That's how they're involved in plans.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so as long as that was incorporated in the preliminary plant, okay, so.
So I, I make a motion to approve this.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, communications received and filed. Uh, long range report from me is that we were critiquing the rest of the building fronts from, I don't know, I think we were like Moose Lodge or someplace all the way to Tim Hortons. And the PDD did go in front of the long range or their input from twenty-five acres to ten, but they tabled that. And that's all I got to tell you at that, at this point.
Okay.
Unfinished business, Tops Plaza, anything?
That's been tabled.
They, they requested for a, I'll be sending an email at four eight, you guys today, they're requesting table and said they will be in.
Okay, motion to table, someone?
So moved.
So moved.
Uh, Brad.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the solar farm, I'm understanding that they, uh, the town attorney's asked.
Council head said, you guys are not too accidently, you have updated information. There must be a mandatory referral on the town board, which will happen at the next meeting. So this will be a run of your ball.
Okay, so motion to table them.
So moved. Second.
Second by Bob. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Bob, do we read the resubmitted July fifth and what do we do with the June twenty-fourth first volume?
And Dave, I have not been able to take quite the show through them. You know, I would go with the newest middle along with the newest structure.
Okay.
And that may equate as the.
Okay.
Uh, just briefly, just, I know we've had a lot of discussion on the, I'm not picking on the architectural review board, but I know we've had discussion about taking the architectural review from the commercial to move it from the architectural review board to the planning board. Any discussion on that?
I guess I'd like to hear from the town board as to what the, um, what the marching orders are to the architectural review board. Is it specific that they are only looking at single family homes, front elevations? Or is the charge that they're looking at everything? I, I, I don't know.
Well, I think Amy was on the boards, so she just moved from there to here. So I think, can you chime in?
It was primarily residential and, but, you know, every now and then we would get something to look at that was commercial. But it had usually gone through this board first, so.
Well, and interestingly enough, the current, uh, architectural review board minutes does talk about commercial. So, and that's the first time I remember seeing it there, but Pete, is there, is there some?
Well, I mean, every site plan with a structure that, you know, let them work more, you know, I, I, because I work in an annual basis and that. You know, coordinating, so every commercial property goes to architectural review board, precise.
Okay.
So after last meeting, I brought up the question to the town. As far as commercial, architectural, what, what are we doing? They said this board is absolutely welcome to talk about, they didn't, they want to make things that, you know, as far as mandating them, not so much. You know, this is a site plan. You know, can you make strong recommendations to architectural? Absolutely. Over. Scare your, like, basically, of each. Now, the architecture view board has some different ideas. Always towards I will put you guys are thinking, but I think the fact that you're putting your. I think you. I will say you can alter their opinions if you serve.
Well, i- in our checklist, you know, number twelve and thirteen is building details, height, building elevations, finished elevations, colors, materials, dimensions, rooftop plans. And then the last thing in our checklist, which is town law, by the way, is to follow the town design and performance standards. So if you look at this Benderson development that's in the architectural paperwork that we have, you know, they just talked about, and they approved this, they just talked about adding a band on the building. And we were way against the band that the building should be finished all four sides for design and performance standards.
Somehow it got to them long before it got to you.
Okay.
Which doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. That should be down river from here, you know, uh, that, that would make a lot more sense.
All right.
Realistically, maybe any building beside they find and they could change this before. So now you're looking at, should be approved, it's, it'll just change. Done different things. So I don't know how that all, something fell apart there. Well, the, the problem was is they made application, they got referred to both boards.
Yeah.
As you know, that project tabled how many times in front of this board?
Right.
Meanwhile, for them, it was no change, no change. So, so approval, plain and simply, the approval happened, you know, in a vacuum of the discussion. There wasn't anything that this board, you know, it already happened before this board could finally say something about the project. Um, so, I mean, that's just the things that we, all of us have to be cautious and especially, you know, when the town board shuffles everything together, gets all the inputs from all the various boards. They need to weigh those, decide on those, perhaps see, hey, there's been a change and send it back to someone. You know, that's what, you know, that's why this board, you know, this board is an advisory board. And the town board is taking those recommendations to craft it. You've seen them say yes to your things. You've seen them say, no, not interested. Sorry, we're gonna do it this way.
Rarely.
But it happens.
I understand.
But I would also, I would also about to point say that if, if it comes to a, uh, approval on this board, then you say, we feel that it should be visited, the, the architectural review board because we made these changes and we, we've built these findings.
Fair enough.
Send it back.
Right.
You know, I, I don't really have a problem with that.
Yeah, I think.
This board is, is way more discovered than the architectural review board. If you have discovered, then you go forward ever.
I mean, another, another example is Dave Mazer did the Grand Island, the Commerce Park. And there are notes right, I'm reading them right here. The siding will be charcoal, black roof, four foot of brick wall. Well, that was all talked about here.
Right.
Yeah, but we never saw that again. After it went to, to architectural review board, like he, he proposed a plan, a plot plan or plant plan or whatever. He was here for that site planning. And then I read the minutes and said, when did we talk about charcoal and how come we didn't get to see it again? But that's, you know, neither here nor there.
Yeah, well, he did mention it that night because I asked him.
Yeah, no, I know. There's a lot of discussion.
Right.
I just didn't know if it would be a more formal.
Right. I, I think the only, um, hang up would be timing and, and, you know, and that's, that's, that's the issue.
You're right.
Things don't get stuck in architectural before they get stuck. Those are more information, Pete.
Yeah.
And I understand that.
Right.
I appreciate that because you're doing your diligence.
Yeah.
You know, but in the meantime, one gets away ahead of the other, you know, and maybe, maybe we need to work on our process. Maybe it needs to be, maybe, maybe the architectural, commercial submission needs to come to this board.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you know, maybe that's the part of the equation.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm on a vibe. I can make recommendations.
Sure.
You know, um, as far as side cutting, they're.
No, I don't think we should do that. We don't want to do that.
No, I'm not, I'm not knocking that. I'm just saying that, you know, designs, performance areas, north, central, south should be here.
Right.
And not two places.
And, and I, I, I will, I'm just gonna speculate their wheelhouse. You know, and, and dormers and siding creation, keeping things like that there. It's not necessarily commercial. Uh, that's a little more with this board's wheelhouse. So there's a lot of discussion.
Okay, just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah. Well, the dialogue alone has brought an awareness of the board's receiving recommendations to look at timelines, what happens. Yeah, by, by all means, they're saying, you know, board, give us your comments, give us your thoughts. And I think what they're, what at first the knee jerk was is let's not hold the site plan hostage on an architectural feature, but comment strongly about it. Don't say, we're not approving, because it's this. It's like, look, the layout's good, the site plan's good, but architecturally, we're gonna recommend these changes to the board rather than, you know, right here, right now, we're voting no because we don't want. What I see from the architectural view board, and maybe you can back me up. They're, they're more than open to that.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
I think, yeah, absolutely.
And, and have we done that, Bob? Turn people down?
Your last interface with the applicant basically said, look, I'm gonna propose it this way. I, I feel you kind of just, you mean, talking about, you, you did strong arm a decision of what to do, but.
Well, yeah, but his.
Were you, you talking about brick covenant?
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, I think we should have that discussion because.
I don't think we're strong armed anybody.
I don't think so either.
Well, he, he came in, he said his application was incomplete. He wanted approval right down in there that night. And I said, well, I'll make a motion to see if I can get you approval. I don't feel I strong armed him.
Right, yeah.
You know, I says, let me make a motion. If you don't like the motion, then I even asked him, if you don't, here's my motion. If you don't like it, I'll rescind it. And then we'll see if, then I'll make a motion to table you and maybe that'll pass.
Well, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't think we need to or should be asking for, uh, you know, somebody's, uh, uh, an applicant's opinion on a motion. We make the motions independent, okay, uh, based on our findings. At the end of the day, everything we do is for the good of the island. And sometimes, you know, people feel like the toes get stepped on, but that's just the way the process works sometimes.
I, I didn't mean to come across that way if that's the way I was perceived. I did not mean that, that all. No, I, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that, Bob. I'm just throwing, I'm just putting that out there. I did not mean to make him feel I strong armed him because I, I, I'm trying to help out everybody. So I, I, I'm not the strong army type. Okay. Okay, motion. Go ahead.
Question for Bob. Um, now that the accessory building law is in effect, is that being followed by the zoning board and the, uh, board of ar- architecture and?
That shouldn't be Casey. That's Casey.
Do you feel that's being followed?
Yeah. Well, we haven't really gotten that far with it yet, very beginning. The tail wag, you know, there were still things in the system. Then we're into the previous law, so it's, that's kind of. You can't, you can't respect the. Change.
Okay.
From start.
Understood.
The day of the vote, the new application.
But the new accessory structure local law has gone into effect, right?
Correct. So we had, so we're just coming. We require them to meet the new law.
Right.
None of them may jack on to the zoning board because they want something different.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's great.
Okay.
You're already going to ZD. So it's working to that extent. We don't have as many going to the zoning. I think, I mean, my personal opinion always was is that our law shows no guidance as to what we wanted. I mean, it was just, you want to drive to be the variance. You know, it didn't matter. It was, it was a hundred square foot or ten thousand, it's the same variance. You know, at least now there's a little bit of guidance as to.
Yeah.
What, what might be considered acceptable in personal areas.
Yeah.
And all that. And it, you'll, you'll never have, build a catchall at the gate point. It's not perfect, but you can be.
Yeah, the.
At least you'll have appropriate sized garage.
Guidance is implicit in the wording.
Right.
I mean, because one year's worth of discussion went into that thing.
And this way here, you won't end up with a giant garage in a small residential area. They can go to like, you know, Love Road or over there where there's more property.
Yeah, it's the same process for the three bound square foot garage in Schreiber as it is in a.
Right. This gives you a little more direction.
Exact same, you know, that was good. Anyway, it's too recent for me to know how it's gonna do, but I think I already had somebody kind of rumbling, so that I kind of.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So move. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
See you next month. Thank you, everyone. Uh,